Hello there Alaskians, wherever you are, welcome to the Must Read Alaska Show. Coming to you from somewhere in Alaska. This is the place where we talk about, you guessed it, Alaska. Where we keep the mainstream media on their toes and where we are standing up for what's right and a world run by leftists. You can find out more by heading over to mustreadalaska.com and also checking out the Must Read Alaska YouTube channel for some really great content. But first, let's get this party started.
Oh, very nice. Well, good morning, John. How are you?
Doing awesome. How are you doing today?
Yeah, how's everything on the Kenee?
Things are going good. It's, uh, snow's melting a little bit and, uh, which is exciting. Uh, we've got a god awful amount of snow, which is, uh, you know, good in some ways, bad in some others. Uh, but you know, the big exciting news for us this weekend was over the weekend, we became the number two most popular podcast in government, uh, for the government section in the entire U.S., which is pretty exciting because literally I'm in my kitchen right now with my laptop sitting on my kitchen table and there's old pizza and Legos next to me, drinking some coffee. And, uh, you know, we're the, we got the number two podcast, so we're very excited. Thank you everybody for listening, for downloading, for tuning in. Uh, it's because of you that we do this and, uh, we're just excited to be, you know, uh, up in the ranks of the big boys, so.
Well, it is pretty neat and I'm, I'm in Spinard and, um, I'm in my office and we live a very glamorous life. You're there in the kiss gate at your kitchen table and I'm in Spinard and we've got, uh, I don't know, there's at least 30 people watching us right now. How's the sound today, John?
Sounds great, you know, and, uh, the, uh, you know, we decided to do these Facebook lives as part of our process and we hope that you all have enjoyed them. We're going to be on, uh, Monday mornings, uh, Wednesday mornings and Friday mornings for sure on Facebook Live that will then be turned into, you know, iTunes and Spotify and FM radio, iHeart Radio and Alexa and Pandora and all those things. So you can, you would pretty much be wherever you're at, whether you like it on Facebook Live or like to wa-, you know, listen to it later on, uh, on iTunes Podcasts. We'll be there and, uh, we're excited to have those of you here that are with us this morning. I'm going to be looking at some of the comments as we talk to, or as you talk to our guests. And, uh, if somebody has a question for our guests, put it in the comments there and then, and then I'll kind of sort through them and maybe pick one of them.
Very good. Well, everybody's sort of joining us now and that's great. We got 40, 40, um, people on with us already and that's pretty exciting. And we really want to get to our guests this morning. So welcome to the Must Read Alaska Show, everybody. I'm, I'm really happy that we're doing this on Facebook Live. This is something that John and I sat down at the beginning of the year and said, what are some of the things we want to do this year that we haven't done before? And John said, well, I think we really need to take the podcast and do, and do it from Facebook Live and then sort of reverse engineer it onto the podcast platform. So if it sounds like a little bit of a different opening, it is because we really are using a different format now. We're, we're just, um, using this video format and then translating into audio for everybody who's in their car or who's listening on their earbuds as they take their walks and so forth. But today I'm pretty excited that we have a guest with us who's running for Anchorage School Board. And I think everybody needs to know this woman, Rachel Reyes. Welcome to our show.
Well, thanks for having me Suzanne. I'm really glad to be here.
Yeah, and I've been meaning to do this for some time and I'm so glad that we waited until that we could do this on Facebook Live because we do have a tremendous audience here and like John said, we're reaching more and more people every week. We set new, new, uh, John, we're setting like new records for ourselves every week. So you, you're reaching a lot of people here at the, sort of the Must Read Alaska Tribe. And they're going to really love you because you are a badass. I'm sorry, you are an incredible person. And we want to find out all about your, your, um, history because you don't come up from a, a super traditional history. You've got a little bit of a different path in your life. Tell us about being a helicopter person. How'd you end up, how'd you end up being like a commander?
Okay, so I started out enlisted. I went to basic training. I enlisted 20 days before nine 11. And I hadn't even gone to basic training yet and I was in a educational delay program. So I was in a National Guard unit and they said, you have 30 minutes to show up. I was like, show up to what? I haven't even been to basic training yet. And they handed me a firearm and gave me my rules of engagement, sent me to the airport for seven days before somebody caught the mistake. I was like, kidding me?
And so that's kind of in a way, it's very similar to what's going on in Ukraine because in Ukraine, we are handing women and men rifles, uh, these automatic weapons and saying, you know, go defend our nation. And, um, so that, that was in a bit of the situation we were in at nine 11, 2001 and you were there.
It was an interesting time. I mean, I remember waking up, I was driving to school and hearing the towers fall and then getting the phone call. And I think I was one of the only people that went to, uh, basic training with federal activation time under my belt. But it was, it was a good experience because it really solidified my desire to serve and it made me sure of my choice.
So everybody who's joining us, and I see there are a lot of people joining us, um, this is Rachel Reyes. She's running for school board for, uh, the municipality of Anchorage. And it is a, it is a citywide seat. It is now, um, being occupied by sort of Occupy Democrat type person who, uh, doesn't believe in liberty. Rachel has fought for liberty. She has fought for our nation for liberty. And, um, so it's a very, very strong contrast and we're so glad to have you on our show. And I know you're a very plain spoken person, so feel free to be a plain spoken person with us because that's kind of how we are on this show. So you, you, you served and then you, um, you learned how to fly a helicopter. You became a commander. How did that evolve?
So I started out enlisted and I went to an appearance board while I was stationed in Italy. And I got sent to work for the Staff Judge Advocate for the Texas Army National Guard in active duty status. So I worked for him and I worked a lot on Texas legislative law. We worked with the Inspector General's Office doing audits and investigations, which I think will serve me well in the school board.
Oh my goodness, yes.
And I, so I was working with general officers and there was a Colonel, Full Bird Colonel, who was a woman. She was a pilot and we just got to talking and I was getting ready to go to officer candidate school. And she said, you know, they're going to tell you no a lot. Don't let them. I was like, okay, that's good advice. And I, kind of already how I'd been in life. So I went up before a board of 17 people and I beat them all. And one of them was a Ranger, so that was kind of a, yeah, beat that guy. And I got into flight school at 30. I was not young when I did it. And I went to flight school and while I was there, I worked really hard and got selected for medevac. And I did that my entire flying career. And the day I got home from Afghanistan, I was getting to the escalator in Fort Hood at the airport. And there's my battalion commander waiting for me and he says, congratulations, you're now the air traffic services commander. So I just kind of always accepted the challenge that was given to me at the moment and made the best of it. My goal was always to leave it better than I found it.
You know, I gotta say, and you just want to jump in there, John, but I just gotta say, talking to you and listening to your life story, I don't think I've ever had anybody on this show who's actually given me goosebumps. That is an amazing story. That is such an amazing journey. John, what were you gonna say?
So folks, if you're joining us, we got Rachel here. She's a school board candidate. Literally, literally like a real hero is here live with us on the Must Read Alaska Show. And she is up against the force of the Liberal Democrat Party, trying to create some good here on the school board in Anchorage. Rachel, what's one of the things that, uh, struck you as, uh, somebody that moved from maybe listening to school board meetings or listening to assembly meetings or showing up to school board meetings to actually putting your name on the ballot? What was that? One or two things that made you take that leap of faith?
It was the dawning realization when I did testify at school board meetings and when I sent emails to the administrators at the school my son used to go to and emails to the board, I either got no answer or I got the blow off answer. And I got a lot of, shh, we know what's better for you. I'm like, you do not know what's better for me or my child. We're supposed to be partners. You're charged with educating him and I'm charged with raising him. And those things should go hand in hand and complement each other. And they weren't. They wanted, they definitely wanted to let me know that my questions were unwelcome. My attitudes were definitely unwelcome when I was like, why can't you answer this very simple question? And they didn't like the simple background things you would ask just to get educated about something, which is a huge red flag for me. You don't want to answer the simple background of what are we doing? You're definitely not going to tell me why are we doing something? And for me, if you are an honest broker with the public and you have people's children, I don't think there's anything more important to a person than their children. You are, it's inherent upon you to be an honest broker and they just weren't. They were telling me no. They were ostigating the truth. They were trying to give me pretty language. I was like, look, I know a lot of 50 cent words too, but I want you to give me the actual answer. And they just couldn't do it. And after a while, I was like, you know, it's not in me to sit around and sit on my chair and Monday morning quarterback this. I want real change. I need to be the change I want to see. And I've always been a leader. Sometimes I was thrust into it and sometimes I sought it out, but I always rose to the occasion because you can't fail at that. And so I thought, you know, I want other people to have better and I want to have better and I want to see change. I need to get out there and lead from the front. You don't lead from the rear. You lead from the front. You set that example. And what was I showing my child if I sat home and just complained about it and didn't do anything? Did we just take it and it's okay? That wasn't going to work for me. So that was kind of the impetus that got me into the race.
This is amazing. And so, um, just to take a break here in the conversation, how can people find out more about you? If you, if they want to say, help your campaign, you have a website?
I do. I have a website. It's called reeseforalaska.com and that's-
How's that spelled?
Oh, yeah. R.I.E.S. That's a common one. Make sure you put that I before the E. And then F.O.R. for for and alaska.com. You should be able to find it fairly simply as long as you don't misspell that name.
Okay, so we're going to drop that in the, in the, on, on the website and also onto Facebook, right, John? We'll, we'll figure that out because, because your name is spelled a little unusually and I, I think it's also people pronounce it in different ways as well.
Oh yes, and I wore it on my chest for a lot of years, so we've heard it all, but it's fine. Yeah.
So it looks like you have some very interesting documents behind you.
Oh, yeah.
As somebody who is, uh, served our country for, uh, 16 years, is now putting their name in the hat to race, in a race that historically, I mean, we got Dave Donley on there and that's about it. And so you're going into a territory of, uh, that is, uh, got very few conservatives in it. What are some of those documents that hide behind you and how do they inspire you to do what you're doing today?
Okay, so starting here, this is the Gettysburg Address and I, I think it's one of the greatest speeches ever written because he just, it's not long, it's not flowery. He just addresses the heart of the nation in it. And he says what he feels and it resonates with me. So when I'm thinking about speaking to people, it's not about crafting this polished message, but just remembering to be real, to address the issue at hand, not what I want to say the issue is, because that's the problem, right? We haven't dealt with reality lately. Um, I have something that was gifted to me by my unit when I left Afghanistan and we came home. Those are all the different flight team patches and group pictures of them when we were in Kandahar. Um, next to that is my certificate of completion for doing the Camino de Santiago, which is a very old, uh, religious pilgrimage that I did with my two best friends to commemorate, uh, the passing of a friend of mine who was also a fellow pilot. And he actually died saving my life. So it was an honor to go and do that and show up on that day and remember him. Um, they buried him on my birthday, so I wanted to make sure that we remembered him with joy. He was a great person. And then I have the constitution and the Articles of Confederation and then a photo of my son who is serving in the Navy right now. I couldn't be prouder.
Wow, that's fantastic. Do you have, uh, do you have any kids in the school district now?
I have a 12-year-old and I pulled him out last year. He had always gone to public school, all my children did, no matter where we moved with the military. And I was really shocked at the lack of education once COVID started and it brought it into our houses. So we finished out the school year and I was like, okay, I'm willing to give them that. It was very sudden. None of us knew. But they had the whole summer to develop a workable program and to answer the community need. When we came back, that just didn't happen. And I, but I do think it was sort of a silver lining because COVID brought it into our homes and really didn't let us ignore what's going on in the schools and I suspect has been going on for a very long time.
I think you're right. And I think what we saw in the numbers prove it that a number of people, hundreds of people pulled their kids out of the, uh, public school system once they saw what was really going on in the curriculum. And, um, and that's something that all over the country, I mean, I think that's why Governor Youngkin even won in Virginia because, uh, you know, parents in, in Loudoun County wanted to have a greater say in their, in what was going on in the school district. And the schools, the way that they're behaving is that you give us your children and we will raise them for you and we will teach them all the values that we have, not necessarily the values that you have in your family. And, you know, we'll give them birth control, we'll call them by whatever pronoun, we'll, if they want to change their name, we'll even use a different name at school. And we're not obligated to tell you anything as a parent. And we're seeing that, uh, all over the country. A lot of parents just decided they had enough. Because I think that the, the year where people were watching over their kids' shoulders was shocking to people.
Shocking. Well, my kid would say things and I always kind of assumed he got that off the internet, TV, YouTube, something, his friends. No, it was coming from the schools. When he comes home and says, mom, tell me about being transgender. I'm like, you're not supposed to be watching stuff like that on YouTube. What are you doing? He says, no, I heard it from my teacher. I was like, wait a minute, you're 10. It's not appropriate. And where was I consulted whether or not I'm okay with that? And when I, you know, went to the schools about it, it was, we don't want you here. Take your questions and go away. My mom is a retired public school teacher for, for many, many years down in California, which as we all know is super liberal and she heard about it and was upset. She started coming to parent teacher meetings with me and they wouldn't answer her questions either. Cause she's, she's an insider, right? She's asked very pointed questions as an educator about rules, codes of conduct, rights of parents, rights of students, and they wouldn't answer her either. So I was like, okay, it's not me. It's not that I'm just a parent and I don't understand education or I don't know what's going on or I don't know the right questions. It's, they refuse to answer.
Yeah, we've all seen those, uh, school, we all see those school board meetings where the parent shows up to the school board and they read expert, uh, like a expert of, or excerpt of maybe a book that, that they've, a teacher has read their students. And that parent gets kicked out of the school board meeting because it's too sexual and it's too crazy. Yet the school districts in these cases were fine with kids listening to this, but they're not fine, you know, they themselves listening to it. And so what are, uh, Rachel, what are some of the things that you hope to accomplish if you, um, you know, uh, win? And, and are a member of the school board in Anchorage, uh, you know, what are some of the things right out the gate that you hope to accomplish?
Well, I'd really like to see a culture shift where the schools and the parents are back to partnering with each other and we're welcoming parents back into the schools and we're asking them their questions and we're seeing what the children's needs educationally really are. And we have an open, transparent, you know, co-opted environment where we can have open communication and just say, this is what my child needs. Maybe the school says, well, this is what we can provide. And we find that healthy compromise that lets everybody focus on getting these kids educated in primary skills, reading, math. I'd like to see us get away from all this social engineering and get back to history, science, civics. I'd, I'd also like to, um, have a very serious conversation about bringing back a very robust VOTEC program. I don't think college needs to be for everybody and it's a completely contrived argument that if you don't go to college, you're a failure. That's ridiculous notion.
Yeah, uh, and speaking of, uh, speaking of your campaign, everybody, this is Rachel Reese and she's, she's running for school board. This is in Anchorage and this is a citywide seat. There isn't a district assigned to it. Everybody votes. Right now, the person who has that, that seat is very well funded by the unions. She is on record saying that, um, we do not live in a fundamentally free society. Therefore it is really fine to mask the children. And she was a, a big pro-masker of the children. Of course, to, as we know, today is the first day in, you know, pretty much all year that the children in Anchorage can go to school without a mask. They still have to wear one on the, on the bus if they take the bus. But they can go unmasked. Now, if that is not okay with your, with your opponent, she wants those kids masked because as she said, she's on the record saying, we are not in a fundamentally free society. There are things you have to do, like mask your children.
I absolutely disagree. As you can see from the wall, I am 100% this is a fundamentally free society. I had a gentleman call me last night, tell me very ugly things and that he would never vote for me. And you know what? That's his right.
Sure.
This is a fundamentally free society. We were founded on freedom. People died for that. I have friends that have died for it. And to see it squandered or slammed is terrible to me. It's, it's a travesty and a complete miscarriage of our founding principles as a nation.
So people who want to find out more about you, they can go to, to reeseforalaska, that's R.I.E.S. for alaska.com. And you have an event tonight at the main event?
I do. I'll be there with the other school board candidate, Mark Cox. Um, there's a common misconception, we're running against each other. We're not. We do two seats, two candidates, so you get to have us both. And then I will be there with all five of the assembly candidates that are running because I fully support them. And we've had conversations, all five of them and me, about rehabbing the school budget and getting the spending under control, getting the money back in the classrooms where it belongs. And see if we can make some real change and also offer relief to the taxpayer.
Right, so tonight, that'd be Monday night at the main, the main event, which is on Old Seward, kind of right off of Old Seward Highway. Uh, you can look that up. It's, it's a little, uh, event venue that is very popular now and a very comfortable place. They always have good food. And so that would be, it's a fundraiser for you too as well.
Yeah, it's a fundraiser for me, yeah, and for all the candidates. And just to get the word out, this is a very grassroots event. We need the community to speak out and say, we want change.
Right, so, uh, it's reeseforalaska.com tonight at the main event. And let's talk a little bit about, um, let's talk a little bit about some of the things that you are hearing from people as you go around the community, because I know you're listening to people as well. What are they telling you?
A lot of people are worried about the sexualization of children in schools at a young age. That comes up a lot. And Anchorage is very diverse. We have, what, 100 different languages spoke here, people from all over the world. And the number one thing I get asked about is, what's your opinion on CRT? And I, I think it's poisonous and dangerous. I think it creates racism.
For those who don't know, and I bet everybody who's watching knows, but what is, what is CRT?
So CRT is, uh, stands for Critical Race Theory and the liberals like to say, oh, well, that was in law schools. It's 40-year-old standard. I'm like, I know that. I was a paralegal. I'm aware of where it comes from. I'm also aware it's been brought into the mainstream and put in our schools and co-opted as something very different than its original intention. This is no longer a canon of thought for legal scholars. It's something they're teaching our children to push equity, which sounds great, but in my opinion, equity is a legal term. It's something you get in a business deal or a divorce. Equality is what Dr. King was talking about. It's what Nelson Mandela fought for. It's Gandhi fought for. It's what I'm interested in. I have a child. His picture's on my wall. He's multiracial. So which part of him are you talking to when you talk about this diversity and inclusion? You know, which part of him's the victim and which part of him's oppressed? And I've actually been accosted at school board meetings by members of a group here in Anchorage that I won't name and called racist and white privilege and all sorts of names because of the color of my hair. And they don't know my mom is Mexican. So you can't be judging people on how they look. I, I absolutely celebrate the diversity of heritage and the diversity of ideas and experiences. But to base it on something as simple as skin color is foolhardy. There was a time when that was needed in this country, but that time passed decades ago. And to bring it back is almost criminal in my opinion.
It is. And you know, I don't think a lot of people don't, uh, in, who are in that business, the equity business, which is a victimization type of a business, uh, they are, what they're saying is, is that people who are minorities just can't get there without more help. And, and that's just really an insult. That is that, that soft bigotry of low expectations. And what they also, the point they also miss is that so many of us, myself included, we have multiracial families. I have extensive ties with, um, with Hispanics in my family. Uh, and I'm, and I mean, you know, Mexico, I mean, we, we have a, in Mexico, uh, the family goes all the way, way back to Mexico. Um, and so, and I'm sure, John, you've got a multicultural family as well. People do not acknowledge that about us, that we are all now in multicultural, multiracial families. So quit telling us that our children and our nieces and our nephews or our in-laws are not good enough to be able to manage on their own. And it's like you said earlier as well, uh, not everybody is going to go to college. I don't care what skin color you are. It's not cut, it, college is not everybody's path. And for some people, they want to work with their hands. That's what makes them happy is getting up in the morning, working on a task and then completing that task as opposed to going in and doing, you know, targets and milestones and, you know, spreadsheets. The people are just different and we need those people. We need people who work with their hands, who make things, who make, actually make our world work for us. And, uh, we need to honor that more. And I'm really glad to hear that you're on board with that as well with, um, with, I guess it's, it used to be shop and so forth. I don't know what it's called now.
Yeah, I, I always call it vocational technical skills because that's what I grew up with it being called. But what a wonderful world we live in, right? Where you can have these opportunities to choose and say, I want to do this particular thing. And you can make a living and be financially independent, raise your family and also enjoy what you do. I mean, what an awesome option. Why aren't we offering that to kids? And then to tell children they can't achieve without a handout or a help from the government because of the way they look, I think it kills their hope. I, I come from a poverty background. I do. And so I went to public school and that was my way out. But to tell children that they can't do it, it, it took a lot of sacrifice and a lot of drive and a lot of my mom being all over me about my homework and go to class and go to school and, you know, you don't need boys or makeup. You need school. And so that was hard, you know? And to tell a child, you can't do that, why would they go through all that hardship and sacrifice? Why would they dedicate themselves to something they're being told they can't achieve anyway?
So you're hearing about Critical Race Theory from people and, um, that's, that's fascinating. Are you hearing anything from parents about this, um, Safety Resource Officer issue that has been, uh, sort of fluffed up? It's the latest gaslighting issue out there. I mean, there's a, just, it's a budgetary issue and it's also a, an issue of defunding the police kind of a thing. What are you hearing from parents about the Safety Resource Officers, if anything at all?
So I hadn't really heard anything about it till after I testified about it and the mayor testified about it. And it was not really on anybody's radar, but I do see a lot of comments about it now on my Facebook about, oh, will the mayor cut money and this and that? And it is gaslighting. He just didn't want to play the shell game with the money and I don't want to do that with the school budgets either. I'm fully on board with him having responsible, transparent spending and still keeping a valuable service. SROs are invaluable in our schools. The parents want them, the students want them, teachers want them. Even the superintendent, who I don't usually agree with, wants them. So why was the board trying to get rid of it? And when you ask that question, you get silence.
What you find out if you really dig into it is that they, that Margot Bellamy, the, the chair of the, of the school board, what, the president of the school board, what she wanted was to get rid of the SRO officers, the Safety Resource Officers, and replace them with social workers. You know, maybe there's a role for that. I don't know. I mean, it's, we are, we are increasingly making our schools into very weird environments where maybe, maybe we do need more social workers in our schools. But, um, but apparently the teachers really do want the Safety Resource Officers because they want to protect the kids. And John, you have some experience in this, don't you?
Yeah, it's, um, uh, when I was going to school, I went to a big school, maybe 2,000 people. We had a full-time sheriff at my school and man, that guy stopped probably three or four fights every day that, you know, uh, probably literally saved somebody's life every month. And, uh, so I think there's a role. And we, we were in suburbia, Washington. It wasn't like we were in like downtown in a city. And so I think there's a role for officers like this in a school setting, uh, especially at bigger school where it's just impossible for teachers to, you know, play literally the police to kids in the hallways and at lunch and stuff like that. So, uh, Rachel, I've got one last question for you. Let's say you're knocking on a door or you're making a phone call and you have one minute literally to pitch somebody who you are and why you're doing what you're doing. What do you say to that person?
I would introduce myself and say, hi, I'm Rachel Reese. I am interested in parents' rights, school choice. I want to get rid of the division in our classrooms, get back to education and do it with smart spending that focuses on the classroom. Can I do it in a minute?
That was, that was under 15 seconds. I love it.
Well, when you know your own mind, you know your own mind.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is great. So everybody who's just tuning in, this is Rachel Reese speaking to us. She is a candidate for school board and the election starts really in just two weeks because the, the ballots are mailed March 15th. That means you might get your ballot on March 15th, uh, you'll get it on the March 16th or March 17th. And you have until, uh, April 5th to get that ballot into the municipal clerk. And then, uh, and I advise everybody to get your ballot in early because the way that the municipal clerk is running things, um, she might send you a letter saying that- she might send you a letter saying that your ballot doesn't count and you need to cure your ballot. Those are air quotes, cure your ballot. But if you're out of town, you can cure your ballot because you, you are out of town, you don't get that letter from her. And so it's possible that your, your vote might not count unless you, you know, get it in early and then really monitor to see if that ballot has been received. And it's, this mail-in balloting is a little bit tricky for our side. I would choose the conservative side because a lot of people understandably don't trust it. And they don't have a, a lot of faith in the clerk herself or the way that she runs the elections.